Good evening, everyone. We are returning back from closed session with no reportable action. Welcome to our meeting tonight. A roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Matina.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Kelly, you want to lead it?
Sure.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks for joining us tonight. If you are here for an agenda item, then please wait for that item to come up and speak. If you want to talk to us about something else, we do have forms up there for citizen input. Next, we have acceptance of the agenda. And I believe we have an urgency item tonight.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have an urgency item here for Lakeport Christian Center Motorcycle Blessing on... What's the date on here? June 17th, 2017, 9:00 AM to noon.
So we want to add that under council business?
Or consent.
Consent.
Or consent. Are we going to put it on consent? Can we just take them out? This is the first time I've seen it. Good, okay.
While we're waiting, if I can just mention for the record that this is an application that came to the city's attention after the posting of the notice for today's meeting and requires action prior to the next regular council meeting. Therefore, it does meet the draft requirements for urgency item, provided those citizens vote to add it to the agenda.
Thank you, David.
So, Tim, would you add it to the agenda? To consent agenda?
I move to add this application to the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So with adding that, did we just accept the whole agenda or do we need to now accept?
You need now to accept the agenda as a matter of fact.
Okay.
So this would be consent agenda each. Any item?
Correct. Okay. So next, we have the consent agenda. Waive the reading except by title of any ordinance. Approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting. Approve the warrant register of May 23rd. Approve application number 2017-022 with staff recommendations for the annual Halloween parade to take place on Main Street on October 31st. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or his or her designee... I don't know why we have...
His.
His in there. Her designee to execute all master agreements, program supplemental agreements, fund exchange agreements, fund transfer agreements, and/or any amendments thereto with Caltrans. Authorize the cancellation of the regular meeting of July 4th. Receive and file the draft minutes of the Measure Z Advisory Committee meeting of May 24th. And approve application... I don't know if there's a number for it.
2017-024.
Thank you. With staff recommendations for a bike blessing event on June 17th, 2017. Does anyone want to discuss any of those? Anyone from the public? Okay. We'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there is no further discussion, I just move to accept the consent agenda A through H.
Second. Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kelly, do we have any citizen input tonight?
Yes.
Sam Lyons. Hello, hello. Do you want... Oh. I gave you each... Not everybody. Margaret, you can get yours.
Thank you.
For those of you who are in the back, copies of this map are out in the lobby. You can pick them up. This is a downtown Lakeport walking path. And we have a little bit of a setback because we've got the medallions to set into the sidewalks. And we lost the sidewalk there in Library Park for... I mean, it's not growing, but we can't set it. But we can't set anything in it right now. So we have ordered signs that will look like this and they will go up in that portion of the park until we can set the medallions. If you look on the corners of the new sidewalks that are downtown, they've already set those medallions. They're really creative. And so the signs that we're having done up are small metal signs that will go on posts down there in Library Park to get people started. I don't know if we've approved which benches we want, but these... Actually, we didn't even have to pay for these because the businesses on the back sponsored these cards. So that's great. And they are up at the Chamber of Commerce. They're in hotels. They are at physical therapies. And everybody seems to be really happy to have them. So this is a walking path that will bring people out of their cars, hopefully, walking around Lakeport and let them know how far they have to walk so that they don't get started and decide they can't make it. So we hope that this will just be something that people who come to town will be able to do. They don't need any kind of equipment. And it'll keep them downtown, hopefully. Any questions?
So are you discouraging people that want to jog or run these track?
Well, you can run it backwards if you want. If you get really good.
Thank you, Susan.
They're great, Susan.
Thank you.
It's really nice.
You should add the Lakeport little medallion on there.
The little logo thing?
Yeah.
You know? Didn't think of it, but the next run?
Next run.
When we do want, we'll do it. And big thanks to Kevin because Kevin did this map. He was really sorry that he said he could do it. But thanks to Kevin. I guess it was very hard because you have to have everybody on the right side of the sidewalk, right side of the street, so that it's all AD except for that little corner up by 16th Street. So thanks, Kevin, for the great job. Anything else? No? Any other citizen input tonight? Okay. We have a new employee introduction. Is that you, Kelly?
So I would like to introduce Pam Sack to the council this evening. Pam is the newest employee in Administrative Services. She comes to us with a lot of years in human resource background. She recently relocated to Lake County and just couldn't sit still and needed to get back in the job market. So we're so fortunate to have her. She'll be assisting with city clerk functions, but also human resource-related tasks. And Pam was notably the first... Tell me again. The first member of your board of trustees?
The first woman on the Board of Directors in Jensen's five-year history.
Oh, really?
For the corporation that she came from. So that's a big deal.
So you know we've got somebody great. Yeah. Anyway, so just wanted to welcome her. Welcome, Pam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. All right. Moving on to public hearing, Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Kevin?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Consistent with your council's direction of January 17th and then reiterated again at your last regular meeting on May 16th, staff has prepared the necessary materials, documentation, and required noticing to interested parties for your consideration of the formation of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency for a portion of the Scotts Valley groundwater basin, consistent with the provisions of the 2014 Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Staff has prepared a draft resolution for the formation of this GSA, together with the boundary map, which includes the entire city along with approximately 350 acres of unincorporated area just west of the city limits. This includes portions of Scotts Valley Road and Riggs Road, where the city does supply some municipal water services along the laterals traveling from our groundwater wells on the Green Ranch out to the city limits, just there at Highway 29. Additionally, the city provided legal notice of this public hearing, consistent with the requirements of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, both in the Record B and then also individual mailings to interested parties. I've had several conversations with interested parties, including the Yola County Flood and Irrigation District, but most of my inquiries have been from residents of the 350 acres of unincorporated area where we provided individual notification. Most of these concerns raised have been regarding whether or not the city intends to increase the amount of groundwater that comes from the Green Ranch wells and whether or not this action would lead to the placement of meters or other restrictions upon private wells in this area. And I imagine that others in the audience here tonight have some similar questions to that matter. It's not the city's intention to increase the amount of groundwater pumps beyond which it is currently permitted to do through the Yola County Flood and Irrigation District. And then nor is it the city's intention to meter and regulate private well use in the Scotts Valley Basin. The discussion to form a GSA comes directly from the state's action in the passage of the 2014 Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which requires the development of groundwater sustainability plans for designated medium and high priority groundwater basins. The Scotts Valley Basin is considered a medium priority basin by the state. The decision to form a GSA must be completed by June 30th of this year. And as stated in previous meetings on this topic, the city's original choice was to form a joint powers authority with the county to develop a more comprehensive strategy to manage the entire Scotts Valley Basin rather than just a portion. The city met with representatives from the county on this matter and even drafted a draft joint powers authority for consideration. However, the county ultimately decided to pursue a different direction that would combine the management of both the Scotts Valley and Big Valley Basins into one GSA. The city of Lakeport would be provided a technical advisory role, but a voting membership as a part of that agreement. It still remains the intention of the city to work with the county in coming up with some sort of shared initiative for the Scotts Valley Basin. However, if the city wishes to maintain an official voice in this process, it must file its intent to form a GSA, as I stated, no later than the end of this month. If the city chooses to form a GSA, staff will move forward with the submittal of the required information to the Department of Water Resources immediately.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from council before we open the public hearing? Nope. All right. Go ahead and open the public hearing and take any comments or questions from the public.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rhonda Armstrong, and I'm the chair of the Scotts Valley Advisory Council. And the purpose of our council is to participate in the decision-making processes that affect our area, as well as representing the residents of Scotts Valley. Many of the residents do have some questions about the formation of a GSA and the subsequent plan for the entire basin. Our first question is, will the GSA include representation from District 4 County Supervisor and a resident of Scotts Valley? Or is the agency solely going to be made up of city representatives?
Kevin, did you want to answer?
You know, of course, it's our intention. As I stated, we definitely want to continue to work with the county. We feel that, you know, management of just a portion of the GSA is not the best route to go. So we want to continue and actually come up with a better solution that would include the entire basin. But we, as the city of Lakeport, also want to be a part of that process as well. This resolution just forms it, but there's no actual specific measures as yet of what the composition of that groundwater sustainability agency would be at this time.
We'd like to make a recommendation that you include the District 4 County Supervisor and a resident from Scotts Valley. How will the members be selected? By appointment, by application? Has that been decided?
That hasn't been decided as of yet, no.
At the May 16th meeting, we were told that the GSA will have power to levy fees, limit pumping, and dig new wells. But we were also told that those powers would only apply to the city's service area. And... But the plan would cover, of course, the entire basin, as it's already been mentioned. The residents want to know what assurances they have that those powers will not extend beyond the city's service area, such as putting meters on private county wells.
Most of the measures that come into regulating this are directly from the state. So it's going to be very difficult to kind of assess what they're going to throw down our way in the future. But at this time, you know, the first order of business is to actually form this GSA and then come up with, you know, the membership sort of stuff that you're alluding to. And then the next biggest piece is by January 31st of 2022, is the actual preparation and submittal of a groundwater sustainability plan.
I thought it was in 2020.
2020 is for the high priority basins, but where Scotts Valley is a medium priority. So it's 2022.
So we're going to get a little bit more time here.
So that actual physical act will be the main, you know, provision and providing what regulations and things are going to be required for that basin. You know, in working with the county in the past, we're full support of their efforts trying to demonstrate that Scotts Valley indeed is not even a medium priority basin. So we're...
Well, clearly, we're not next to an ocean. Will the agency hold public meetings so that allow input from the public?
Yes.
And lastly, can we be placed on the agency's mailing list?
You already are.
Happy to provide...
But yes, you have a different address than the one that we have right now. I'll be more than happy to take that down and make sure you get any future notices on the table.
Thank you.
If I can just add, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act requires that all GSAs have a provision that allows input by stakeholders. And that's why Kevin has gone out of his way to make sure that everybody who's got any connection to either surface or groundwater in the area has been informed about the proceedings today. So if we're going to get to that point that this GSA is actually going to be necessary because the alternative plan that the county submitted is not accepted for some reason, then obviously, those are things that the GSA will have to determine in terms of how that input is.
Well, we appreciate being included. Thank you. This is just a quick question, Pam. Maybe Stacy can answer this. Would this be something that goes to LAPCO? I don't think so.
No.
Is the formation of an agency...
It is. It is the formation of an agency, but there's no provision in here for LAPCO to be involved.
Oh, okay.
But we will inform them that this is...
Yeah. They're one of the interested parties that we haven't notified, but...
Right. Because I know there's been a lot of talk about water from LAPCO, so...
So there's a lot of agencies. There have been the creation of agencies in order to become a groundwater sustainability agency. A number of property owners have, throughout the state, have created agencies through LAPCO process.
Oh, okay.
And then declared themselves GSAs.
Oh, okay.
But there's no need for the GSA formation procedure to go in front of this decision.
All right. Thank you.
Stacy, can I? The thing about this whole deal is is that the county is in a unique position that if they don't do anything, they're going to be the default management agency and we will only have a seat at the table. Their plan is that to reduce Lake County from a medium priority to a lower priority, in which case, we won't even need to have a groundwater sustainability plan. But in order to provide the city of Lakeport and to ensure that we have a seat at the table to negotiate, we're going through a lot of minutia right now that may be totally irrelevant to the future of all the water holders in the well, all those people out there. Because we have certain guidelines set forth by the state that we have to fulfill obligations to get these things in. So we have to get the GSA formed. And we were more than willing to do it with the county, but the county has nothing to lose because they're going to be the default one if we don't do it. So we go in and do it. And then we can join with them later if it looks like we're not going to get below the medium priority thing. But all of these onerous activities and all of these things are going to be very... There's going to be a lot of conversation over the next several years. The thing is, we're just ensuring that the city of Lakeport and the people in Scotts Valley will be properly represented by a body that is also includes the city of Lakeport and not just the county. So that's why Kevin has done all this work to make sure that we meet all of the deadlines. And all of these scary things, the monitoring and all this stuff, is literally years and years away. And there's going to be some incredible amount of litigious activities in the San Joaquin Valley where there's overlying aquifers and people trying to do that. We're going to be a small fry in the big picture. But the hope is, and the county's hope is, and we believe that we were going to be reduced from a medium to a lower priority. And none of this will even be relevant to any of you and all the worries that you're having and all the scary things you see on here and worrying about monitoring your wells will be totally irrelevant. And most of us believe that's the way it's going to go. Kevin is just making sure that if the worst-case scenario happens, that we in the city of Lakeport will have, you know, the opportunity to chime in on the political policies and all the protocols and all these things. We don't want to be left out and just be in advisory status. Does that pretty much summarize it?
Very well.
So relax.
Now that we have that laid out. Anyone else from the public? Let's go.
Well, I was at the meeting.
Okay. I am Joanna Reddick, and our property overlies this aquifer. And my concern is recharge. Because the recharge is in the area at the Green Ranch, according to the Waller study, where the rock embutments are in the creek. And if this is split, the city is going to have control of the refill end of it and the county will have the other. And we know that when the rocks... When the water stops at the rock outcropping, then the creek quits running. And then as it reverses, the artesian runs from south to north. And it dries up the same way. It goes back from north to south. So by splitting this aquifer, we're leaving a recharge on one side and the rest of the aquifer on the other. So I could conceivably, worst-case scenario, because I live down in the valley, be pumped dry. If the city is monitoring and, you know, things went crazy and you took more water than you say you are. So you have a 750-acre feet now, but is it metered?
Is our well metered?
Yeah. So you're regenerating how much you take?
Absolutely.
But if you were to increase it and take more out of the aquifer, you would be your own agency that decides this, wouldn't you?
We are not permitted to take any more than that out per our agreement with Yola County.
Even this won't change that?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, it's still a kind of funky to split because it's all one aquifer.
I agree wholeheartedly. And that's why it's our first priority to continue to work with them.
Because it's fascinating to watch it as it comes and as it goes. And it's starting to dry up now. And at one of my pumps today, there's no artesian dripping. But no doubt, my neighbor up the road still has artesian.
Interesting.
And the creek is just barely running. There's no current. So that's a little aquifer. And it's... It could be scary to those of us below.
This is a small problem compared to what they're going to go through in the San Joaquin Valley. Because they're overlying different counties, different cities, different ranches. It's going to be a righteous mess.
Yeah. But it could be ugly.
You got to start somewhere, though.
Oh, can you state your name?
Ron Love.
Thanks, Ron.
Oh, I was wondering about... Because the boundary is, I think, one of my properties probably the edge of the boundary. And the uses of out of the aquifer is where I was wondering if it's not like... It doesn't look like the major use is right there beside the Green Ranch, would be in that boundary. And that's the only use of... Excuse me. That's an acre foot in eight minutes. It can be pumped into the peril tree right on top of the aquifer, where the aquifer is. The orchard that's right on there is probably the largest user of the whole area. And they wouldn't be in that boundary, but I think I would be because I have water service. And my wells are right on the edge. And so the city is actually on the edge of the aquifer, I think, not in that one. So my question is, what... How would that be, you know, determined? Because I guess then that would be the county controlling that... The main part of the aquifer. But I think she was maybe speaking of such an issue. And to address it, it looks like the report said that over the last 10 years, it was 2016, there's been an increase. That aquifer has increased as being not as much being used as it was 20 years ago. So there's, it seems like there's, the report says it's a non-issue of any risk to the water. And so I'm wondering how much that's going to be included even in the background of the organization realizing that there is no risk to the Scotts Valley water basin, apparently from the report.
That's exactly our hope. I mean, the county has submitted an alternative plan to essentially, you know, remove the Scotts Valley basin and the Big Valley basin, for that matter, out of these medium and high priority listings. But that's an action that needs some further review by state authorities to do. And in the meantime, we have this deadline looming over. As far as the boundaries creation, our boundaries are solely based on where we currently have infrastructure in place.
Yes.
So, but it goes back to the point of, we really want to continue to work with the county to come up with an actual larger system where we're a member of that decision-making process for the entire Scotts Valley.
Comprehensive.
Sounds like, I feel that, you know, seeing the person has more worse, because then I would have access as well. But I was wondering about if there was something, how that's going to come up, what neighbor can not be in that, in that control right there, so, and the other person is doing the same operation, farming, or, and there's not many farming in that, I might be one of the only farming properties in that.
If the alternative plan was not successful, then the putting together this groundwater sustainability plan in 2022, that would probably be one of the major provisions is what, if it is determined that there are sustainability measures that need to be taken into place, what would those look like? And that would be part of a much larger public discussion between both the city, the county, and interested parties, and of course, property owners that live out in that area.
And one last question, that if, if the service was discontinued, the water service discontinued, would that property stay in?
Yeah, at this time, it's all based on where the infrastructure is provided, not necessarily where the specific meters are in there.
Where the, oh, where the, yeah.
The water laterals that travel out along.
Well, I'm the last one, I'm, you know, I'm sure that's, yeah, like I can live there. Okay, that's what I'm like, so that's not, you know, it's just where the infrastructure is.
Correct, that's where, that's where we place those boundaries or the proposed boundaries, it sounds.
Yeah, even like, I think the infrastructure is probably 10 feet into my property.
Yeah, I'm not familiar specifically.
Well, my question is if I canceled my service and I said, okay, I would be more comfortable that way, would that matter?
If the council decided so, they have the power to adjust those boundaries?
Just, that was just another question.
So, and just to clarify, if the, if the alternate plan that the county submitted is rejected, then the county is going to become the GSA for all of the area in the Scotts Valley basin that is outside of the proposed boundaries that Kevin is running.
Excellent.
So that area would fall under the county. And then in order to prepare the plan that we have to prepare, all the GSAs have to work together and share data to create, you can create two different plans, but it may make a lot more sense to just create one.
Yeah, it's going to be just, okay, and it was just a hypothetical, I mean, the value, the value in the water sometimes, you know, it's a good thing.
Anyone else? No? All right, we're going to close the public period, bring it back to council for discussion. Any questions or discussion?
I think it's just sad that it looks so scary to everybody, but it's just, because I think Kevin first said that it could be up to a year and a half, or maybe David said it could be up to a year and a half till they change the designation from a medium to low. We have all the data that shows that we strongly support the idea that the county's right, that it's probably going to be a low priority. But we just need to go through these different steps to make sure that we are always going to be represented, because that's what our job is to represent the city of Lakeport, the people who are in there. So this is just a lot of minutia that we may have to go through for no particular reason. And it's a shame that some of the articles that get out there have all the scary scenarios where everybody's going to be monitored and so forth, and the whole thing, the GSP doesn't even need to be completed until 2022, and some of us might not even be here by then. But anyway.
Well, don't say that.
I mean, we might have moved.
It will just all go away. Maybe it will just go away.
That's, I think that's.
Nobody wants anyone telling them how much water they can use from their well, so.
I think the good news is, is if you.
When it gets to that point, we might hear a lot more noise about it.
When you get south and you start looking at some of the horrible scenarios down where people are overlying different areas, it is going to be, as the one lady said, it's going to get really ugly. And I think that we're just going to be on the periphery looking in and just wondering how it ever got so bad down there. But just the good thing is, is that the state of California finally, after a couple hundred years, decided that we needed to actually manage groundwater. And with, you've seen the subsidence and the infusion and, you know, all that kind of stuff, this definitely needed to be done in some way, shape, and form. And at least by the time 2022 comes around, we will have something in place that's going to hopefully try and preserve our most precious resource.
Without taking away people's property rights.
Absolutely.
So it's important that we move forward. But I encourage people, if you have more questions or you get concerned, call the city, call Kevin, ask us questions, because we're not trying to take anything from anyone. We are trying to jump through the hoops of the legislature that's out there.
On the other side of the two is call the county and ask them about their plan, because they, I think a part that doesn't seem very clear is, whether it's us or the county, there will, you know, if we're in that medium priority, there will be a GSA. It may not be us, you know, but it'll be, it'll be the county, or hopefully it'll be the county and us, so that we have input on it. That's all we're trying to accomplish today by putting this through. But if we stay in this median level, there will be a GSA, or more than one. We just want to be able to have a say on it. That's all it is.
Any other comments, questions? We have a suggested.
Madam Mayor?
Yes? Do you want to come out?
On behalf of the county.
Do you need to reopen the, and you can go ahead and come out.
Phil Moy, Director of Water Resources for Lakeport. I just wanted to let you know the current status of, I checked with DWR on the status of our alternative plans. We probably won't hear anything back from the state until probably the end of the year or into next year, as to whether our alternative plans have been accepted. My personal opinion is, Lakeport is doing exactly the right thing by forming a GSA or your intent to form a GSA, you're protecting your own interests in the groundwater and ensuring that you have a place at the table if and when we have to form a GSA for the whole county. So inasmuch as Kevin's plan addresses 350 acres outside the city within Scotts Valley, if the county has to form a GSA, it will encompass the rest of Scotts Valley and Big Valley as well. So that's also as the county, so just to address your comment, Mr. Martin's about that.
That's great, I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you. Anything else? Not, we have a suggested motion.
Madam Mayor, I have moved to adopt the resolution electing to become the Groundwater Sustainability Agency for a portion of the Scotts Valley basin within the county of Lake and direct staff to proceed to file the required notification with the Department of Water Resources.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. Next, Berryessus Snow Mountain National Monument. Margaret?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. The city council is being asked to adopt a proposed resolution in support of a permanent protection of the Berryessus Snow Mountain region as a national monument. And actually, is Victoria Brandon? Oh, here she is. Okay, good. I'm going to have Victoria explain a little bit about the reason why we're going back at this. Back in February 15th, we had a resolution and some new.
We've gone around.
Some new things have happened, so Rebecca, excuse me, Victoria approached us.
I'm going to go into the long page of those facts. I'm not going to go on in great detail about the Berryessus Snow Mountain region, why it's important, because I think you all know that already. And as Margaret just said, the city voted a measure of support, stroking of her designation. Designation then took place on July 10th, 2015. There was a tremendous celebration out in the, in the area in March 2016. Since then, the BLM and Forest Service, which approximately each has about half of the Berryessus Snow Mountain desert lands, have been engaged in an extensive planning process to devise a joint management plan. And this, they had a series of public workshops on that, and one of them was here in Upper Lake, was very, very well attended, approximately a year ago. And the idea was to get public input on what people wanted to have happen out there, because this is an area which, aside from its natural resources and its cultural resources, also has tremendous recreational potential. And a very wide variety of stakeholders, including diverse folks like the Bad Country Horsemen and the mountain bikers, Sierra Club, and the off-road vehicle people got together to make this happen. And we all want everyone's voice to be heard and everyone to have a chance for their favorite activities to take place out there, including the Rock Council. I had not realized that there's a lot of work out there and we want to be able to continue to enjoy it. So all this is ongoing. Since there are two federal agencies involved, it's kind of complicated. There was a two-day meeting over in Woodland in January, where we talked, we represented this from all sorts of stakeholder groups and from the federal agencies about how they were going to go forward. The ideas they're going to, they've started taking input, what people want, going to draft a plan for joint, for combined management, which has to follow both the rules that the BLM has and the rules that the Forest Service has, and they've both got plenty of rules, so this is kind of complicated. And then work together to come out with a draft, which will then come out for a second round of public review, then they'll go back and they'll rewrite it and try to really tweak it so it's just the way it ought to be. In the meantime, a full-time monument manager has been hired. Her name is Rebecca Wong, and she works out of the BLM office in Ukiah. So everything's moving forward, ready to get the real potential start to be actuated. And all of a sudden, a couple of months ago, the, not even that long ago, the president came up with an executive order that all the monuments that had been created since the end of Clinton administration were to be reviewed if they were larger than 100,000 acres. This involves 22 national monuments around the country, of which six of them are entirely in California, and one of them is partly in California and partly in Oregon, more than any other state, and it includes Berryessus Snow Mountain. And among the arguments which had been made for this review is the statement that there had not been sufficient public input before designation, which is not true in any case. There's a long process for making these designations, but absolutely wasn't true here. There was great field input from all sorts of people, including lots of local governments, and support from local governments like the city of Lakeport, and also from the state of California, which voted a resolution of support before designation, which is something that has never happened before anywhere. It's all very, very difficult for the agencies who are trying to do their job, because they don't know what the future is going to hold. And also, there being, there's resources, monetary resources being devoted to this review, which could be better used for other purposes. And we're hoping to, we're hoping to protect all the monuments. They're all really important, and they've got something very special about them. But locally, what we're really hoping to do is to get Berryessus Snow Mountain off the table. And to do that by renewed expressions of support is why we're going back to the cities and we're going to be talking to the board supervisors, I believe it's going to be on the 20th of June, to reiterate their support for having a national monument, two-thirds of which is here in Lake County. And so that's why I'm here tonight to ask for your support in, before the comment period is over. The comment period will close on July 10th, and we want to really load in comments from individuals and from local governments and from stakeholders saying that this is a valuable thing for our community, and they should leave it alone and let the management, which is underway, let that plan come to a conclusion, so we can have, begin to get the benefits from this designation and from this really remarkable place.
Thank you, Victoria. Answer questions. Yeah, any questions for her?
I'm just glad she came up here, because I was having this horrific deja vu moment. I said, I thought we'd covered this already.
We already did this.
I'm like, wow, man, am I losing it? So the audience explained, thank you, Victoria.
Thank you. Okay, I also have, it would also be really helpful if anybody, but elected officials in particular, would submit an individual comment. And if you'd like, I can email you all a draft letter, or I've got postcards here, which I'm happy to hand out to them.
That would be great, we can hand those out. And if you want to email, you have my email address.
Absolutely.
Draft, I can share that with anyone that wants to submit one.
Thank you. So if there are more questions?
Thank you, Victoria.
Down. Thank you. Anyone from the public? Okay, any discussion?
There's no further discussion. Madam Mayor, I have moved to adopt the proposed resolution to support for the Berryessus Snow Mountain National Monument.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appreciate it. Thanks, Victoria.
Thank you.
Next, we have police operation plan for fireworks. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. What you have before you tonight is the proposed police operations plan for, that includes response to our safe and sane as well as illegal fireworks in the city of Lakeport for the 30-day period surrounding the Fourth of July, which will begin around June 17th and go through July 16th. City ordinance requires that I file with you a report on the police operations plan and how we're going to deal with issues surrounding fireworks for that time period. So, which includes areas within the city where illegal fireworks were a problem in a previous year, a detailed explanation of the deployment of fire and law enforcement resources to deal with those troublesome areas, as well as a report on the apparatus and personnel who would be on duty for that period of time. And then recommendations and discussion of what, if any, detailed dedicated illegal fireworks enforcement patrols there should be during the year. So with that, you have, I think, four attachments in the report that detail our plans in those areas and how we would respond to them. I did want to make note of one other item for this year. I believe I was before council back in September with the debrief or recap of what happened during the fireworks period. And what we noted this year was that there, we had quite a problem with large amounts of trash being left on both city and private property throughout the city. And we noticed that when we looked into that, after also receiving, you know, many citizen concerns, that the fireworks, the groups that were selling the fireworks who had in the past been involved in some of the cleanup of the shopping centers and city property, that did not occur last year or even the year before that I can recall. So we have, with the assistance of the city clerk's office, reached out to those groups and requested that they come up with a plan to help with the cleanup of those areas after this year's fireworks. We do not have a plan with them finalized yet, but we're hoping that within the next couple of weeks, we're going to be in a meeting with those groups and with the company that sells the, that provides the safe and sane fireworks that they sell, to finalize some kind of a plan. So we'll follow up on that, but I just wanted to make you guys aware that that was an item we were trying to work out, since we do believe that the city ordinance dictates that they have a responsibility in that cleanup. And we certainly don't want to hamper anybody's plan, but we'd like, we'd like to see some more cleanup of some of these areas and not so much debris and garbage left for businesses to have to deal with or the city, city property.
That's a great idea. It was a big mess last year.
So with that, we're just requesting that the council receive and file this plan as, as our operation plan for this coming year's fireworks.
Okay, great, questions?
Well, I'd just like to commend the chief on moving forward on that particular type of movement, because it seems to me that there's a voluminous, I mean, I know that there's a lot of money in fireworks, and that's great, and I am, I am certain that there's probably many people that are involved in selling the fireworks that would be happy to participate in cleaning them up, were they aware of the fact that it was such a big problem? And I think that the chief communicating with them and creating a kind of a cohesive effort, they are creating a lot of, generating a lot of merchandise going out there, and it's going to be laying all over somewhere. And those of us that do it personally and privately, we take care of it, but in the big parking lots and stuff, they probably want to get out of there. And I think it's great that the chief is moving forward in a proactive way. And I think the greatest thing is that no one's ever thought about saying, oh, well, maybe we should just quit fireworks. I think that that's a big integral part of the Fourth of July celebration. In Lakeport, people come from all over to see that, and they like to do it personally, and I think this is important that we move forward and get cooperation with people that are making the money, because after all, it's a big cash cow for them, so they should help out. So, good job, chief.
Thank you.
Historically, they have hired cheerleader teams, you know, the school sports teams to do that cleaning in the past.
That's my recollection, those and scout groups and various different type of.
And fisheries.
Youth groups that, and paid them.
And they paid them for that.
Paid them some money, you know, for their services, which was, it worked out great when I saw it happen that way in the past.
Okay, hopefully.
And I think for whatever reason, it's just kind of fallen off the radar, not, maybe not intentionally, but it just has.
I think they'd be willing to get back on the board.
Yeah, for sure. Anyone from the public? All right. We have a suggested motion.
Madam Mayor, I have moved to receive and file the illegal fireworks police operation plan.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, next, we have an application for the 2017 Lakeside Car and Boat Show. Brad?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. I've actually been working on this item along with Doug Reiter with our Public Works Department, and we've had several meetings with the promoter of the Lakeside Car and Boat Show, Tony Barthel, who's here tonight, can also answer any questions the council may have. But, hang on, Tony.
I'm all excited.
Yeah. So I believe the majority of the council is aware of this event. It did occur for the first time in Lakeport last August. Mr. Barthel is proposing to do this same event, again, with use of public areas primarily in Library Park, Park Street, and the Third Street program extending all the way over to the south edge of the Fifth Street launch facility. There is one major change this year in that they're expecting more cars and boats to be displayed, and they do want to add a section of Main Street to be closed in addition to the lakefront area closures that we had last year. Last year, Main Street was not closed. So Doug and I have met with him, he's presented us with some updated maps, which we are agreeable to as far as city staff, as far as our staff is concerned. But basically, what would happen is, in addition to the lakefront closures, we would close between First and Third Street on Main. And then we would need to make essentially a one-way roadway going eastbound, Third Street, northbound along the west edge of the Third Street parking lot, and then westbound back to Main at Fourth Street. So basically, that would, this event happening that way would basically.
So basically, that would, this event happening that way would basically close the Third Street ramp for that day for any use of the public. However, the Fifth Street ramp would, and parking area, would remain open all day except for short periods of time in the morning when they launched speedboats if they happen to get county approval, that's still pending through Water Resources and the Sheriff's Office, to do high-speed boat runs off of the, basically, the lakefront of Library Park north of Third Street. So, and that should be, as Tony has advised us, minimal time in the morning, because we would just close it and then reopen it back to the public right away when they weren't launching anything or recovering anything. Doug, am I missing any high points on that?
No, I think you covered it really well.
Okay. So with that, hopefully the council's been able to look at the map that was included in the package, and if you have questions for Doug or I or Mr. Barthel, we can try to answer those.
Okay. Any questions before Tony picks up? Tony.
As you know, last year, we put on this show, 100% of the proceeds go to Operation Tangle Line, so we're not making any money off it. We already have, without doing really any advertising, we have 180 people who have registered for the show. I know, it's kind of crazy. We have guys bringing semi-trucks full of boats from Arizona, Seattle, a few other places far away. So the show already has a good reputation, and then we're still going to do some advertising.
Wow, good job.
And for the people out there listening, you know, we also accept sponsorship. It all goes to Tangle Line, so. But we had a few issues last year, not big ones, traffic issues and such, and we figured out ways of mitigating that this year. And we're going to have the boats running just in the morning when the lake is kind of glassy. It's one at a time. I've got the approval from Sheriff Martin. He said since it's not a race, he doesn't have to really do anything, so it's just a matter of completing my lake bed encroachment permit, and then I should be good to go with that. So that's the deal.
Are you going to have people out there on the lake when the boats are out there to run to keep other people away from them?
Yes. We have, the Lakeport, the Coast Guard Auxiliary has a boat they're going to put out there, and we have another couple of jet skis that are going out, including a tow one. So yeah, we're going to have it delineated that there's fast boats coming. Yeah, it's my objective to have no incidents that, other than everyone had a great day.
Tony, have you talked to the businesses on Main Street at all?
Yes, I walked Main Street. I've spoken to, well, I dropped off a flyer with every business owner. I had the privilege of speaking with a lot of them, and they were very excited for the most part. Last year, several of the restaurants said they almost completely sold out of food just for lunch. They had such a great day, so.
But what about regarding the road closure?
They were aware of it, and it should be a huge increase in foot traffic.
Yeah, I totally agree.
So most of them were thrilled that I was bringing more foot traffic. There's a couple who said, you know, well, one that said, "Well, it always results in less traffic. Well, put a sign out and some music, and I think you'll solve the problem." So turn the lights on and sign, all that good stuff.
Any questions?
No, I just attended last year, and it was a great time, and I'm one of those people that have pre-registered again.
Awesome. Yeah, there's a lot. We have contingent of military vehicles coming too, and the sheriff is going to bring the SWAT truck. And it should be, I think our biggest problem is going to be running out of space, honestly, because it's gotten already a good reputation. The good thing is, the way we're pitching it to the participants is as a three-day show, because Friday, of course, is Concert in the Park. So you get people here for decades, which, you know, you wouldn't want to miss that. And then Sunday, we're doing a run to the spot in Clear Lake and then the miniature golf. So the idea is to generate room sales, rather than just, you know, come and go, and want them here for the whole weekend, and generate room sales. And of course, that means restaurants and all the other things people spend their money on. And the food vendors that I pick for the park specifically do not compete with anybody on Main Street. So my goal is that they, you know, a few people will participate with the food vendors in the park, but the rest will go, "Well, I'd rather have a hamburger," or whatever it is, and go up to Main Street. So the whole idea is to bring money to Lake County. For everyone but me and Dave.
Yeah.
We're the only ones. But, oh, well.
So Tony, I know that Jack was having some serious problems with reservations at hotels and stuff, because everything was like booked, so I imagine, because you guys have already done this, you've already sent out all the territory and all the registration stuff, that they're already getting their rooms booked and so forth, so there won't be too many issues, I guess.
Well.
Shouldn't be a room in Lake County left by the time.
Right. I mean, I know, for example, the Skylark's completely sold out already. I've heard that already in several of the other places, so we're filling them up. Fortunately, we have a lot of great Airbnb rentals here in Lake County, and that is a trend, that people are using that more and more. So we're very fortunate that there's all these great vacation rentals that people can take advantage of. So we have, there's lots of opportunity here.
I didn't know that. There's more Airbnb than BRBO?
I don't know about, you know, I don't know about the numbers, but there are a lot of people who have vacation rentals up here.
Yeah.
And that's a huge, that's the trends anyways. People tend to want to go into those vacation rentals a lot.
Yeah, for sure.
And so we have, it's a huge opportunity for us as a county, so.
I like it. Okay. Anyone from the public? Thank you, Tony.
And I just want to remind everybody, this is a tourism event, and I know there are five certified tourism ambassadors on the day, as all of whom do not have your CTA stars on. And there are a total of nine of us here tonight, and only one of us does. So that's my little, putting on my Lake County hat, just a reminder, but.
You did, Tony, you did the truck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But thank you very much. I mean, the idea is to, you know, bolster the tourism industry here in Lake County and appreciate the audience, everybody.
Good job, Tony. Any other questions?
You should have been a police officer with those observation skills, Tony.
There's nothing else? We have a motion. Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve the event as requested, listed restrictions and requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Woo-hoo! Party is on. Let's see. Carnegie Accessibility Upgrades Construction Bid Request.
Yes, good evening, again, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm excited to bring this one to you guys. We've been working on this for quite some time. It's one of the major economic development efforts the city has been working towards these past few years, is the reuse of the historic Carnegie Library Building, specifically getting it open so it's enjoyable once again to the public. I'm pleased to announce we have finished the design phase for accessibility upgrades to this pivotal community building. Most notably, the design improvements include a lift/elevator, but they also include upgrades and for the provision of ADA-compliant bathrooms, accessibility upgrades to the southern side of the building to allow accessibility entry, and then also making repairs to the failing roof on the second floor, or the ceiling, rather, and also some lighting upgrades. All improvements have been specifically designed to respect the historic features of the building, and the total estimated cost of the project is in the range somewhere between $200,000 to $225,000. This will be paid for through CDBG program income and reuse funds. We were successful in getting a CDBG grant for this project in 2014. And following the advertisement of this project for bid, it will be brought back to your council for review of and award of said bid at that time. We're hoping to get that turned around pretty quick if you guys make the decision to move forward this evening.
Great. Anyone from the public? Seems like we're getting a lot for $200,000.
It, you know, there are some ad alternatives into it, so it's going to be interesting to see where. It's always an interesting process to see where bids actually come back in at, but we're hopeful the group, Garavalia Architecture out of San Francisco, who helped us design this, they also helped us with our reuse feasibility report from, what was that, 2012? 2014? Somewhere in that.
It's been a while now, yeah. I think 14 is what we got.
They're very experienced in these types of projects, so.
There's nothing else? Madam Mayor, I move to authorize staff to advertise for competitive bids for the Carnegie Library Accessibility Upgrades Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go for it. Woo-hoo! All right, council communications. Margaret?
I just wanted to comment on the boat races this past weekend, two-day event. It was a great success. Very, everything was just very well organized and no issues happened with the city. It was a really great event. We're really excited between the boat and car show, boat races, the Criterion in July. We're having a lot of big events happening in Lakeport this summer, and so we're very excited about that and very excited how it all worked out and how much work that Brad and Doug did in the preparation for the boat show, working with the promoter to make sure all went well. So the work paid off, it went really well, and I know Councilmember Turner was working very hard all weekend, too.
Yeah.
It was a great event. So love to have more events that are, you know, that smooth, that's great. Thanks.
Is there any way to get the promoter to give us some kind of figures on how many people were here, how many rooms were sold, and stuff like that?
I believe they're going to do briefing on that, yeah. Okay. So as soon as we get some of that, we'll share that with council.
Thank you.
Maybe he'll come back, maybe even do a presentation. That'd be awesome. Yeah. We could definitely ask him to do so, yeah. David?
No report tonight.
Doug?
No report.
Chief?
No report.
Kevin?
I'll just say a quick thank you to many Lakeport residents. I know we've been working closely with the fire department and letters went out a few weeks ago for fire hazard lead abatement. And I have noted in my travels of the weekend that several people have been complying, and so, if folks haven't done so, I encourage you to do so safely and try and preclude, you know, some of those continuance disasters that we've seen in the county over the past couple of years.
Yeah, I have seen a lot of people out, taken care of them. Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Spur?
No report.
Councilmember Prolet?
Well, since I was at the boat races before ending and all throughout it, I think both Margaret and I took the opportunity to go out and talk to a lot of the boat racers, and they were absolutely delighted. I think that they're really excited about coming back again, and they're going to tell their friends. And the people that I talked to in the VIP booths and throughout the day that were communicating with me, they were really excited about it. I think this is one of the most thrilling things that's happened outside of Tony's event in a very, very long time, and I think it kind of fits together with what we want to be noted as, is someplace where there's exciting things happening that you just can't see anywhere else. And I'll tell you, I remember the old boat races when we had a store on Third Street, and this was really thrilling. I mean, it was incredible, and I think it was a great thing. The drivers were so gracious, and they really want the kids in there, they want the families in there, they want them in a pitch, they want them crawling all over, because they just love the people here. And I've never seen such a great group of people to work with. And the professionalism of the staffing, getting the boats in and out, was unbelievable how quickly those guys got the boats in and got it out, and there was no lull in the action. It was just a great show all the way around, and I don't think there was anybody that was involved that wasn't totally impressed. So I think it was a really good move, and I give a lot of credit to Jack Wong, because, man, he really put it out there, because this is a very, very expensive undertaking, and I don't know how he's going to come out on this, but he really went out all in for the city of Lakeport and the county of Lake, and I give him a lot of credit for that. Really grateful that he did it, and to the drivers and everybody who participated, and the volunteers.
And Madam Mayor, may I say something? It was very exciting to hear people talk so wonderfully about Lakeport, the new visitors, and how, "Wow, I didn't know this place existed, this is gorgeous, you know, why haven't I been here before?" So we had so many amazing comments about Lakeport and our lakefront and the county in general, but right here at the venue, so, anyway, it's very exciting to hear that.
That's the best.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bart?
I'm just sad that I missed the boat races. Not important.
Councilmember Turner? So speaking of boat races, I was there the whole time, and I have to say that a large reason why this event went so well was because of the effort on behalf of staff, of city staff and Sheriff's Office. We had Lakeport Fire, Lakeport Police, Clear Lake Police, Sheriff's Office, both on the land and in the water, and it was, it was so, that's a huge coordination effort, you know. Chief had Command Center open like it was the Fourth of July, because it was that big of an event. And it's because we had such a great presence, not only with first responders, but also with our public works guys, keeping the park up and all of the management staff that helped check in all the time, let's, you know, what can we do when we closed Main Street for the show and shine? That was totally impromptu, but it was a strong move of support for this new event, and it just worked out really great. So I'm just very thankful that we have the staff that we do and the professionals that care about Lake County, and everybody was always focused on the end goal of success for this event. And because it was unified, that, you know, you just can't buy that. That's just crucial to the success of economic development in our town. So thank you. I have more. I wanted to just highlight the hike for hospice, which is this Saturday, at Highland Springs Park from 9:00 to 11:00. There are multiple routes of different difficulties and lengths, so please feel free to join us at Highland Springs on Saturday for a great cause, according hospice services in Lake County. And then I promised Cindy Estrid that I would highlight Grilling on the Green, just a real quick shout-out, because we've got plenty of time to talk about that one, but it will be that first Saturday in August. Thank you.
All right. I just want to mention, we had a budget workshop, that went well, and the budget's moving right along and it's balanced. And to add to what you were saying about the event, you know, I was talking about how great the event was and all these new events coming to town, and what, I don't know if you guys remember, but there's been past councils that have been kind of, they've always said, "No, they, no, we can't try that. No, we can't do this." And kind of the tone has shifted, and my feeling's been, no, say yes, keep saying yes, and try things. If it doesn't go well, we don't have to do it again, make sure everybody's safe. But I think that is paying off, because these events are wonderful, and we will get more people coming to town that have never been here before. So kudos to you guys, too, for taking some risk and going for it. So thanks for joining us tonight. Bring a friend next time. Meeting adjourned.